All right, good evening. I'd like to call the King George County School Board meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
Nice states of America, to the Republic.
All right, at this time, Ms. Tolliver, are you on the line with us?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes. Okay, can you please state your reason for participating remotely?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to request permission to participate remotely for tonight's meeting as I'm out of state for a family medical emergency.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to allow Ms. Tolliver to participate remotely this evening?
I move that we allow Kristen Tolliver to participate remotely due to a family medical emergency.
Yeah, second. Right, well, I will second it. Is there any discussion? All right, call of vote, all in favor? Aye, chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Ms. Tolliver, you may now participate remotely this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on, next we will have the public hearing and public comment on FY22 budget. I do not see any folks in person who are signed up. Mr. Vance, are there any online public comment for the public hearing? Okay, for the public hearing or for general public comment? Okay, so that will, I guess, conclude our public hearing on the FY22 budget. All right, so at this point, we will move on to recognition. We'll start with the King George County School Board. Dr. Benson?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Last meeting, we had the opportunity to to recognize you because February is School Board Appreciation Month. Tonight, I have from the Virginia School Board Association a certificate for each of you in recognition of your participation in special development events and an appreciation for your dedication and service. So again, thank you. This is Kerry Gonzalez. This is Gil Hart.
All right, thank you, Dr. Benson. All right, at this point, we will have recognition of the Be Healthy poster contest winners. Ms. Richard is here for us this evening. Ms. Richard?
Good evening, members of the board. Tonight, I would like to recognize the winners of our Be Healthy poster contest. In December, I worked with Mrs. Fisher and her reopening subgroup to create and organize a poster contest for all students in King George County schools to raise awareness about being healthy, preventing illness, wearing a mask, and washing hands. We had over 50 students from kindergarten through eighth grade enter the contest, and we are pleased to announce our winners. For the King George Middle School category, first place Nathan Robey. Second place, Kiara Rivera. Third place, Kelly Kele- Kiliannis Caltra Garcia. For the elementary grades four through six, we have Abigail Shones, who I believe is participating remotely tonight. Second place, Nadia Ashton. Third place, Emily Drinks. In the elementary grades K through three, first place Jasmine Ashton. Second place, Delaney DeSantis. And third place, Reagan Sevier. Their artwork is being printed and will be hung across the district and all of our schools. We are proud of each of them and their hard work. We're also very pleased with all of the entries, and choosing the winners was no easy task. We would like to thank everyone who entered the contest. And we have many of our participants here this evening. I have certificates for them as well as their original artwork and a copy of their artwork printed on cardstock so that they can save it as a memento. If you are here for the Be Healthy poster contest, would you please come forward at this time?
Thank you to all of our young budding artists. I know I enjoyed reviewing the posters and voting on them. So that was a lot of fun. Hope everyone is getting a chance to look at them, to view the posters on the display here this evening. They're all very creative. Ms. Richard? Are you done?
I'm ready for the next one.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
All right. In the summer of 2019, I was contacted by Mr. and Mrs. Bradshaw about organizing a scholarship program for our fifth-grade girls at King George Elementary School to attend Space Camp. In November of 2019, we selected the first recipient of the Broadwood Space Camp Scholarship. Abigail Dunn was able to attend Space Camp during the summer of 2020 despite her first choice of weeks being canceled due to COVID-19. This year, Mr. and Mrs. Bradshaw wanted to open the opportunity up to all girls in fifth grade from all three elementary schools. So a digital application was created and shared with all fifth-grade girls via Canvas. The STEM teacher shared about this opportunity with our students during our class time, and the students had almost three weeks to complete the application online. The application required essays, teacher recommendations, parent recommendations, and all were submitted electronically. This year, we had eight applicants complete the rigorous process. A team was made up of three King George Elementary School teachers, two engineers, and one adult advanced Space Camp Academy graduate scored the application. Tonight, I would like the school board to recognize Faith Weber as the winner of the Broadwood Space Camp Scholarship. Faith's achievements in academics as well as in her community service were what set her apart from the other applicants. Faith's application is outstanding and the team's recommendation is invaluable. I look forward to hearing about Faith's Space Camp experience and having her share with the next student of our class. We would also like to recognize Abby Youngton for her excellent contribution to the research project. Academic achievement and her typical, those students' family behavior, her college, her department, her work environment, her support, her knowledge. I would also like to recognize Miss Bradshaw for seeing the need to develop the broadest jump on the world of Asian girls and to continue to do that, creating the broadest space for themselves and funding it for two years in a row. I look forward to continuing the partnership and the vision on curriculum. You are one of our Space Camp. Could you please come forward at this time?
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, everyone, for bearing with us. At this point, we will resume our meeting, and we will move on to public and employee comments. So please state your name and your address. You will have three minutes. For those making comment online, I will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining. So in, we have Mr. Grant Dunn.
Good evening, Dr. Benson and the school board members. My name is Grant Dunn, and I'm in the eighth grade and a student of the King George Middle School. Prior to the board's discussion this evening, I would like to follow up on the benefits of Bring Your Child to Work Day. Bring Your Child to Work Day is a national recognition program that allows, that gives children a glimpse into the working world and allows to see what their parents and other parents do for their thing. Despite these benefits, three years ago, participation in this event was changed from being an excused absence to an unexcused absence from school. As we look forward to a life without COVID, I ask to consider allowing those students that have a prearranged permission from the school and their parents to be marked excused during participation in the national event. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. All right, and at this time, we will move to individuals online. So I believe it looks like we have them. There's Rachel Scott on the line. Hi, yes, we can hear you.
My name is Rachel Scott, and I live at 12097 Cobblestone Court. Good evening, members of the board. Last week, you were presented with three different options for moving forward with the education of our children. I expect there will be a vote on these options tonight. The options were presented in order of preference with the hybrid option being ranked third behind 100% virtual and the 100% in-person being the preferred. If you feel you cannot vote yes to the hybrid option due to the instruction time being cut in half, please vote yes to the 100% in-person option. The hybrid option is being presented because of the high rate of student failure in the 100% virtual option, and parents have been imploring the board for an in-person option. Even though 100% virtual doesn't cut down on the instruction time, the quality of that instruction time is decreased significantly compared to any in-person options as evidenced by the significant increase in the number of students failing. The reasons you can say yes to the 100% in-person option are, number one, all teachers that want a vaccine have had a chance to be vaccinated. Number two, the schools are equipped with an air ionization system to mitigate the risk of virus spread through the air. And three, students and teachers will be wearing masks. If you feel you cannot vote yes to the 100% in-person option due to capacity and not being able to maintain six feet of separation between people, I want to emphasize that that separation guideline has been just a guideline, and the CDC has said to do this when able, meaning they know it might not be possible to do this 100% of the time or to the full extent of six feet. But with the other measures in place and good hygiene measures being observed, this is not required for a safe return to in-person. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Mr. Brandon Hager?
Excuse me, ma'am, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, good evening. My name is Brandon Hager and a King George parent. Last month, I sent an article to all of you on a study conducted out of Duke University on in-person learning and the spread of COVID. In the event you fail to read it, Duke's study found that with public health measures and stringent policies in place, in-person learning does not lead to the spread of the coronavirus within schools. A statement coming out of that study by Dr. Danny Benjamin, who is a professor of pediatrics at Duke University stated, "Community transmission should not influence the decision as to whether or not schools open. Schools opening is simply a question of leadership. If you have strong leadership, you open, and you open safely. And if you have weak leadership, you either stay closed or you open and you infect a bunch of people." I want to say that again. "Community transmission should not influence the decision as to whether or not schools open. Schools open is simply a question of leadership. If you have strong leadership, you open and you open safely. And if you have weak leadership, you either stay closed or you open and you infect a bunch of peoples." Based on Dr. Benjamin's statement, combined with schools that have been open across this nation, even in this state since August, why does King George continuously fall under the category of weak leadership? Dr. Benson, I would like to yield the rest of my time to you to explain if community transmission has influenced your decisions and planning. Additionally, I would like you to speak to why King George has yet to figure this out while peers in your profession have had kids in seats since August. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hager. Ms. Susan Park? Oh, okay, thank you. All right. So that concludes our public and employee comment for the evening. At this time, are there any changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, could we move?
Certainly.
Can you just take the discussion items and put it before the action items?
Certainly, we can do that. Okay, so at this time, we will move into our discussion items. We can do Bring Your Child to Work Day first. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. As requested last meeting, I've brought to you a draft proposed regulation. Give me one second to find it. This draft regulation will support our attendance policy, and it does specify then Take Your Child to Work Day as a as a viable reason for an excuse absence. It is JED is the policy dash R for regulation. It is JED is the policy dash R for regulation. So I've underlined in there the draft language, language. In particular, that references Take Your Child to Work Day. This language is all draft as a regulation. It's pulled directly from our family handbook. So we simply took our family handbook language, placed it into a proposed regulation for your consideration and made sure to make specific reference to Take Your Child to Work Day.
All right, thank you, Dr. Benson. Any questions, comments?
I, of course, agree with the new policy. When it comes up for action, I will agree with this.
Madam Chair, I'd like to note that when, in the past 20-plus years, I was attendance officer for all the schools, the division, and helped draft the policy and implement the policy and we did allow for absences for children to attend the Bring Your Child to Work activity. So it is, it is not a new idea and it's a very positive idea. So I certainly support it.
Ms. Panzira?
I think it's a great idea and I'm glad that Grant, you brought it to our attention that it had been stated. I wasn't aware of that. I know that I've had children that have participated in that and it's a great experience for the kids and for the parents as well. So thank you, Grant, for bringing that to our attention.
Ms. Tolliver, do you have any discussion?
Um, no, I also think it's a great idea and I don't recall they were being moved to an unexcused absence. I want to thank Grant Dunn for his presentation and for his persistence in getting this matter taken care of for us.
All right, thank you, Ms. Oliver. And I certainly echo my colleague's sentiments. Thank you, Grant, for coming and bringing this back to our attention. I know my son just turned six, which where I work is the cutoff for bringing kids to work. So we weren't in the midst of a pandemic. I was looking forward to bringing him this year. So certainly a worthwhile endeavor and I too am excited to support having that return to being an excused absence. I guess my only question is, Dr. Benson, do we know what happened as to why that fell off the excused absence list reasons?
I don't recollect specifically. I know that coincides with the time when the state had come out with attendance, well, it still is, attendance as a, a marker for accreditation. So I imagine that the conversation there was conservative about which absences would be excused would be related to that change in the state.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Do you have a question, Dr. Benson? So I know a lot of times, you know, we'll get recommendations from the SBA on changes to our policies and we just pretty much accept them for the most part. Is it possible that maybe this is something that now that we've added it in and it's not part of the SBA and if they go in and make other changes, you know, how can we make sure that this doesn't fall off of our policies?
It's a good question. And because this is a regulation, this is local, so the VSA will advise as far as policies, a non-dash, something, but in this case, a dash R. So they'll advise in terms of the policy and then locally will develop regulations that will support that policy. So we won't use this.
Okay, all right, thank you all. Thank you again, Grant, for coming this evening. So moving on to our other discussion item, which is the Bus Garage, Garage WAN connection. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Before you this evening is a discussion item. Our technology department has continued to do their best to support our transportation facility, which is located out on 301, separate from our central school board office. Currently, we only have a 100 megabyte connection to transportation with the rest of our wide area network. And we are experiencing difficulty given the amount of traffic with both phones and data running across those lines. So the recommendation is that we look to these fiber at a cost of $10,560 a year to increase our connection speed to 400 megabits. And it also offers us the opportunity to have the vendor monitor the status of the line so that if there were a problem, the vendor then would notify us immediately. This will be very helpful to increase certainly the reliability of our phones, transportation. And if you've been out there, transportation is a bustling, bustling center of communication with families and that type of thing. So we appreciate your consideration. The good news is that we anticipate that at least half of this cost then would be, would qualify for E-rate reimbursement back to the child. So we do thank you for your consideration as a discussion item.
Is there any discussion?
Dr. Benson, do we have any idea about the length of time this will need to be implemented? And when, do we be up and running by September?
Yes, by the fall.
Ms. Tolliver, any additional comments, questions?
No, thank you.
All right. Dr. Benson, when do you need actually the decision from the board on this?
We can move it to action next meeting.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that concludes our discussion items. At this time, we will return to our action items for this evening. So first, we have our in-person learning for grades three through 12.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, as promised, during our Wednesday work session of last week, I offered to bring to you updated metrics as of today in terms of the VDH and CDC metrics for school openings. So you'll see that I always offer the two, the previous board meeting, the top of your handout and the bottom is today's data. And so the encouraging, while we're all in our region, still in the highest level of highest risk of transmission in schools, the good news is that both case incidence and positivity are moving in the right way. And this last two weeks, they've moved quicker than I think I've seen in the last two and a half months. And so I think that further solidifies what I've told you before, that I do believe in the early March timeframe, we should be back down into at least the beige, if not the yellow, is my hope. So that's the update in terms of the metrics that you have. The next sheet just simply reiterates our implementation capacity as far as the mitigating strategies offered by the CDC. The next page is the matrix that you've grown accustomed to seeing. And again, while the current for today keeps us right where we are, I am very encouraged by the numbers and I'm hopeful that when those, at least one of those markers moves back to the to the beige or even the yellow, that'll allow those arrows on the, on the x-axis, the top one, to then move to, move down to the left, which should then give us the, the ability to expand the students that we are offering in-person learning to, or at least justify that. So on the next page, this was the recommendation page that I offered last Wednesday. I have updated it for you. Based on your conversation you worked last meeting and the discussion you had with the principals, I'll move to the bottom. First, before I make the recommendation, I want to let everybody know that here in this school, Sunday, we had the opportunity to partner with the Virginia Department of Health and we had our second dose clinic open. And I just want to express my extreme gratitude. While I feel a little under the weather today, I told Ms. Gonzalez that I've never been so thankful to feel so bad. But many, many people worked very hard. They were here all weekend setting up so that our community, in particular, our staff, could receive that second dose of vaccine. So I'll repeat, you know, it looks like the metrics are coming together. The vaccine administered yesterday, the two weeks that we talked about in the Wednesday work session would take us to March 8. And so I do maintain my recommendation I offered last Wednesday, that we provide in-person instruction for those who choose in grades three through six, beginning March 8. And then I also recommend that we provide in-person instruction for those who choose in grades seven through 12, beginning March 22. And that is the first week when we come back from spring break. So we'll have one week of in-person with our three through six students. We go out on spring break and immediately we come back and we would offer to our secondary students, or we would begin with our secondary students, the in-person instruction as they choose. Happy to answer any questions or any discussion.
All right, well, thank you. So do we have a motion to approve Dr. Benson's recommendations? To discuss after we make a motion as an action item?
I move that we accept Dr. Benson's recommendation to provide in-person instruction on the hybrid model for those who choose in grades three through six, beginning March 8. I also recommend that we provide in-person instruction on the hybrid model for those who choose in grades seven through 12, beginning March 22, which is the week after spring break.
Second?
All right, any discussion?
So when we talked to Dr. Boyd last week about, you know, why we couldn't have an instructional model where we have both in-person and virtual at the same time and he, you know, gave us some reasons that it just wasn't feasible. However, there's a lot of other jurisdictions and surrounding jurisdictions that are dealing with Caroline being the closest and also Northern Virginia, Southern Richmond area. And I just would like for us to possibly have a little bit more, since we're not going to be going back till March 22, to have the opportunity to look at that possibility a little bit further. Because, you know, we've also heard from a lot of jurisdictions that have been practicing the hybrid model, that there are some flaws and we've heard some, you know, gotten some emails and some teachers and parents have also come up and said, you know, it's, it's limiting the face-to-face time and it's, it's not as, I guess we haven't gotten as much positive feedback as we had hoped to. So, you know, I think the more that we have the kids in school, I think the K through three or two is working a little bit better. If there's some way that, that we could do a four-day return and incorporating the virtual and the in-person simultaneously would be beneficial. That's an option.
Any other discussion?
Is that amendment to the motion or is that just discussion?
I think it's a discussion item. So I mean, I think that, I think it would be more of a discussion item. But the other thing we have to take into consideration is, you know, we, we are setting a precedent for, you know, what our objectives were possibly open up next. We haven't started talking about that yet, but I think that we have to take that into consideration as we're making this decision. Consider that as well.
Madam Chair, may I, yes. Ms. Panzira, so are you thinking that we would do anything differently with the three through six grades? I understand you're saying that March 22 does give some time for the staff to tweak the model or revise the model or update the model, I guess. But would we ask that the same thing happen with the three through six or would we leave the three through six as it is?
I would like to see it all happen. You know, I think that we've gotten enough pushback about the hybrid model, the blue gold system not working, working as well in Spoxie and Stafford. That I, I think that if we're able to make, make it work for K through two, that we should be able to try to utilize that through three through six, which I believe Ms. Harris was talking about, you know, they're, they're ready to go. So I don't know if that was just on the hybrid, but, you know, I'm just kind of curious to see if we could, you know, look at this a little bit more now that we've got a little bit more feedback from the public and I've also reached out to some other district in the area and listened to feedback.
I spoke, if it helps, I spoke to Mrs. Harris today to clarify that. And you're correct, they are ready to go. However, they are ready to go with everything planned on the hybrid schedule. You know, I think in both the elementary and the secondary level, I'm certainly anxious to get started with the in-person. I do believe that we'll use the time that we have in person to learn lessons and to possibly then seek out adjustments we may be able to make once we see it in action. And I agree with you, Ms. Panzira, that while I certainly hope the fall brings, you know, normalcy, I don't think it would be prudent to be dismissive of the possibility that we may be setting a precedent or at least learning lessons now in these final nine weeks about how we could then expand possibly at the beginning of the year. That's not to exclude any kind of adjustment now. That's simply saying that the three through six, I know that's all set and there you go. And I do know that that committee or that subcommittee did look at trying to maximize instructional time as best they can, giving deference to those youngest learners as the state terms in terms of those priority learners. Staffing-wise is really where we hit, looking at four days a week for all the grades in elementary. I believe we would have required the hiring of additional teachers, which we just, we don't have, we're not there to be hired right now. But that said, we can look as we get into this to see how it's going and then make recommendations for, for future weeks.
What, what's the hurdle for bringing all students back? I mean, I think we've crossed every hurdle. Is it, what hurdle is left? Tell me, please, somebody.
Us?
Anybody?
Are you talking about five days a week as we were like two years ago?
I'm saying, what hurdle do we need to get these kids back to school? What, what's left?
Distancing, well, the mitigating strategies that are.
Okay, we got the mitigating strategies.
Well, we wouldn't be able to implement the distancing with it, because we had everybody back.
What's recommended about the C and C is if they don't have mitigation is to, is to have those distances. So we met every mitigation strategy that the government has. The recommendation, recommendations from the scientists in the government is to go back to school. And that the vaccine's out. And so what would stop us from going to school in two weeks other than SLLs?
How will we transport all students with physical distancing? Because the buses are not, the buses don't have an air quality installation as the buildings do.
But they're working on that, is that correct? I'm sorry, Mr. Collins, I just, since we're on that.
Ms. Panzira, let Ms. Collins finish her thought.
Well, I just wanted to go off of what Mrs. Hawk had said so that we don't lose that. And I believe Dr. Benson had said last week that Valerie has possibly submitted the predisorder to get that.
And the funding source for that could be.
So you get on a bus and you sit next to somebody, you have a mask on and you get to school and you get the stuff to wash your hands, you have a mask and go to school. Why, why wouldn't they be able to sit together?
So I would like to, I would like to comment that the new CDC guidance, since we like to talk about the CDC guidance and how the CDC recommend wants kids back in school. So with the new guidance that has come out, so, and this, I, are, these are taken directly from the documents that have been put out. So consistent implementation of layered mitigation strategies to reduce transmission of COVID-19 in schools is part of the CDC guidance. Considering indicators of community transmission to reflect the level of community risk, phase mitigation and learning mode based on levels of community transition. And the following, following health, public health efforts provide additional layers of COVID-19 prevention in schools. Testing, other things, vaccination for teachers and school staff and in communities as soon as supply allows. And the last that I think is the critical piece, saying the schools providing in-person instruction should prioritize two mitigation strategies. Universal incorrect use of masks at all levels of community spread. And physical distancing at least six feet should be maximized to the greatest extent possible. To ensure physical distancing, schools should establish physical distance, probably six feet between people. So that is to say that despite the fact that we have mitigation strategies, this is still the CDC guidance in the presence of COVID-19. And so that, I believe, is why the buses will remain a topic. The physical distancing and therefore the resulting scheduling challenges that we heard a lot about last week. All of that is in accordance with the CDC guidance.
Okay, so, so ask the question, what, what is not getting us back to school all in person? And the answer I hear now is there's no filtration system on the buses. How much does that cost? How much does that cost?
It's, I don't mean to jump in front of everybody, but I think it's, you know, to have every student in the building, obviously, we would not be able to maintain even the distancing that we promised thus far, which honestly is three feet with masks and that's from the APA, from the previous guidance. Ms. Gonzalez is correct that a week ago Friday, I believe CDC came out with their rein. you know, with their reinforcing the six-foot is the gold standard. But to answer your question, Mr. Collins, that's really, the distancing mitigation strategy as a key strategy could not be implemented with fidelity if you were to bring more students than we currently have planned.
So I'd like to ask Ms. Tolliver if she has any comments online.
Not at this time, thank you.
So, Dr. Benson, you had mentioned that we'd also have to hire more teachers. So if, you know, I think that, you know, first of all, the CDC, it's a recommendation of six feet. It doesn't say mandatory. And there's other risk mitigation measures that we have taken. One is $724,000 ionization system. I'm here with Plexiglas and, you know, I'm sure that there's possibly, you know, if the bus transportation is an issue, there are some other risk mitigation strategies in addition to what the CDC guidelines state that we could come up with. I mean, that's the whole purpose of why this is a recommendation and not, you know, necessarily something that says that we have to abide by all of them. And it's, you know, it's a gray area, it's not a hard line that we need to, you know, discuss openly. I mean, obviously with, you know, we just had some normalcy here this, tonight, which was amazing with some of our contestant winners and the scholarship. But there was not social distancing practicing going on here. They were within three feet, sometimes shoulder to shoulder, and they weren't even siblings, including the teacher that was here. So, you know, I think that it just goes to show that there, you know, these are recommendations and these aren't hardcore indicators or hardcore requirements, I guess I should say, that we have to abide by. And we've also talked about the busing in the past and possibly having people being able to bring their students in and, you know, getting in car pools and things of that nature. So I don't know for sure that that is an absolute deal breaker.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, I do, I do, Madam, can I do a comment if I may?
Certainly, Ms. Tolliver.
So, but that goes both ways. There have not been any mandates, there have been recommendations all throughout this whole situation. So it goes both ways, that they're not hard and fast, that we don't have to follow them, or it's not hard and fast that we do. So because we seem to be choosing to err on the side of caution, in my opinion, it's the same argument on the other side of that. So we can't social distance appropriately on buses. We can't keep six feet apart in classrooms, or possibly even three. Yes, we have an ionization system, which we've discussed several times, that is good for years and years and years to come. It's just not just COVID-related. So again, it's how much risk are we willing to accept? And I think that argument that Ms. Pansier made can go on the other side as well.
Ms. Hock?
Yes, I, I, I have, I can't say strongly enough how important it is for me personally to get my grandchildren back in school, because my hair is turning grayer every day. Now, the fact is that until our risk of transmission goes down at least one, we cannot bring, we cannot consider it. We are in the highest risk of transmission. Now, it has decreased rapidly, as it is pretty much in general. And we had a very, very active discussion about the fact that with a community positivity rate at the highest level, that it's not wise or safe or free of liability, for that matter, to bring students back. Now, however, we as a community, and we being people in your homes can make that transmission rate go down by getting vaccinated and wearing a mask and not gathering and not going out for a spring break. We can make this happen. And frankly, if we are continuing to meet weekly, then, and I'm very ready to be here at any point in time, when that transmission rate and the positivity rate goes down to a moderate risk of transmission, then I'm certainly willing to entertain whatever the staff can do in terms of getting as many students back in as possible. But I don't think we can entertain that until the transmission rate and the positivity spread go down.
I would also like to point out and remind everyone that based on the results of the last survey, we actually have more, the majority of the student population is actually remaining virtual. So, you know, there's a lot of talk about the majority want to get back in school. And yes, many do, we all want to be back, our kids to be back in school at some point in time. But it is worth remembering that at this point in time, we've seen the trend, much as the trends have changed on paper with respect to local metrics, our own trends in the community have changed and people have been erring on the side of having their students remain virtual. And so while there are a lot of valid points for discussion, yes, K through two is doing that now, but I would, I would counter a point made earlier to say that our K through two students are, there's still a split, that it's still a hybrid model. You know, there's still half, you know, half of the population is virtual and half is not. And we've heard from our principals that, you know, we know that instruction, the instruction models change, the older students get, and that same model can't necessarily apply. It applies to kindergarten, it doesn't always apply to high school students. So it's, I'm, I can, as I said last week, I am still in full support of the recommendation made by Dr. Benson that is based on the feedback from our staff and their professional opinions on what works for them, what they have seen and heard and read about happening in other divisions, and that is their recommendation. So I personally am in support of the recommendation made by Dr. Benson earlier this evening.
So I'm not in, not in support, but I do, we'd like to see a clear picture to in-person learning. So every meeting I come to, the bar seems to change. And I just want to know what the bar is. So now I'm hearing the moderate range is the one bar now, and also...
I'm sorry, Mr. Collins. Yes.
And then bus filtration system. I'm sure I'm clear then, what the bar is for in-person schooling.
Madam Chair, may I clear, may I clarify? I said, in my mind, that is a personal opinion, that a moderate risk of transmission is where we stayed for quite a while back then. And that when, and I do want to say when, when we go down to whatever level, you choose the level, you know, that's just my opinion, that when we go down to an appropriate level of transmission, then we need to be open to making amendments, as Ms. Pansier said. That, and I think we can start planning for those amendments early. If the staff could plan for changes as the transmission rate goes down, then we meet weekly and could be ready to review those plans.
What's the appropriate rate?
So, you know, we're hearing a couple of things.
The premise of this, are you suggesting we not offer a virtual option, that everybody come back to school?
I'm asking, when will the bar be set? What bar has to be set in order for our kids to go back to school?
Our students...
I think we're looking to accommodate every student that's chosen to go back in person.
So I think...
All students.
Okay, so no virtual option is what you're envisioning?
No, no, I'm asking, well, I'm envisioning, as everyone talks about, normal. Everybody refers to a couple of years ago as normal. So I want to know what the bar is, what has to be reached? What has to be done in order to us to go back to school in-person 100%? So I, I mean, it's changed over time. And so what I hear tonight is the two things I just brought up was inappropriate, which I thought that the answer was moderate, which you said earlier, and then the bus filtration system.
I'm still confused as far as 100%.
Hold on, Ms. Pansier, just a second.
All kids going to school.
So I think it's, Mr. Collins, let me see if I can clarify this. So I think what you're trying to say is that you would like to have a return option at 100%, that kids would go five days a week, four days, as an option to with the 100% virtual. Is that pretty much what you're saying? To have that option for them, when you say 100% return, that's what you mean? 100% five days a week, all day long? But not necessarily to take away the virtual, but to have the choice between 100% virtual or 100% in-person, is that correct?
Well, no, not really, but that's okay. I mean, the, the, the motion's on the table and it'll come to a vote here in a moment. But I, what I wanted to know was what, what will it take for King George students to be all back in school?
Without a virtual option.
Without a virtual, you know, back to normal. And so if I'm clear, I repeated it three times now, but nobody said that I was clear. Is it the moderate rate and the bus stuff to make them go back to school? Will that, will that be the thing?
So I think because we have deliberated over this at our last meeting as well as this evening, I think that answer is, it's an important point, but it is unrelated to the recommendation at hand. So I recommend we move forward with voting on the motion and revisiting the discussion of what our next step is at a future meeting, which anyone is welcome to, we can add that to an agenda item, we can, you know, we can do that. But I think for the purpose of this evening's vote, I recommend we, without further objection, we...
I would like to... Can we what?
What?
Roll call for the vote.
So, I just wanted to make a comment. I was wondering if there's some way that we could, I think things tend to get a little lost just in general across the board for everybody here and other districts. But if we could make, make the recommendation that the three through six would be with the hybrid, but continue to look to see if we could get them back similar to the K through two and maybe put a hard date of, you know, either the March 22nd or, you know, maybe two weeks into the next semester, as that hard date of asking the administrators if we could possibly work towards that four days a week. And then maybe by that time, we would have the bus infiltration system and a little bit more clear guidance from CDC and maybe some lifting of regulations based on how well the numbers are coming down. And then also, I would like to, you know, just have the hard fest date of March 22nd of returning as in-person, but I would also just like to see if we could get one more look from the middle school and the high school to see if there's any way possible that we could change that as well. Just as a recommendation.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to call a vote.
So I just asked for a recommendation to alter the...
So there's a motion on the table?
The motion. I just, yes, made a recommendation to amend the amendment, or to amend, I'm sorry, to amend the motion.
What's the minor motion?
So the amendment would be that we would accept the hybrid for three through six with the stipulation that we would continue to work towards a learning, I'm not sure what to call it, I'm a mixed words here, to start the in-person model a little bit closer to what we currently have with the four-day-a-week and look into seeing, to be able to open that up possibly the March 22nd or two weeks after the next, the last grading period. And then also to just continue to go with the March 22nd opening for the middle school and the high school, but also to ask if they could look to see if we could do four days with the virtual and combine virtual and in-person for the March 22nd as well. So giving hard dates of starting, but asking that we just do a little bit more research in the model.
The minor motion is too broad to add to the motion on the table. It's pretty large, I don't even understand what you said.
Could you, could you, could you entertain the motion as presented, but could you then look at, and it would be helpful if after we get these kids in, maybe two weeks after that, into the nine weeks, at a work session, the topics you are describing, make sure those are agenda items to bring back to the board at that time?
Yes, as long as in this motion, it's under the stipulation that it will be further reviewed. Maybe if we just do that, if we, you know, we go ahead with the motion, but amend it saying that we will continue to look at the model, the instructional model, in hopes that we could possibly modify that in the future, this year.
May I offer, so the dates, so March 8th would, is in two weeks. March 22nd is, would be our following regular meeting after that. The week of the 29th, which would be, in keeping with what Dr. Benson just recommended, would be the week after, we would have had a week with three through 12 back in-person hybrid as presented. We could have a work session that evening to discuss the next steps for further consideration.
Why would we wait that long for a work session?
That was kind of what you recommended, you wanted to approve, you wanted to approve, I heard, that we wanted to approve the motion on the table. And then also caveat that with, with further consideration. So we could have that further consideration on the 29th, which would be a week after three through 12 is returned.
So I, in hopes that on the 29th, we would be starting that...
Hold on, Mr. Collins.
That we would, we could possibly have the poss, we would have the possibility of being able to open it up for four days. So I think that we need to have work sessions from now until that March 29th so that we can see if there's a possibility of us extending that.
So we want to ask the administrators to bring our students back in-person for the first time in a year and at the same time be planning their next reiteration of the plan versus having them make work what they're implementing now.
Yeah, I don't understand why that is a big deal. No, I mean, they've got committees that have been working on this and they've looked at that. So it's not like they're starting from scratch, not knowing what they're doing.
Okay, was there, do we have, do we have a, first of all, I would like your, can you restate your amended motion more succinctly?
So we would accept the hybrid for three through six with the understanding that we would consider looking at coming in the four days a week through work sessions and having the administration look at that so that we could possibly start that the second week of the final fourth quarter. And that we would continue working towards the four days a week for the high school, accepting the March 26th as the hybrid, or the 22nd as the hybrid, in the hopes of that possibly starting the second week of the fourth quarter.
I think there's too much considering and hoping in that for that to be an amendment to others.
However you want to word it, so that we don't just sit here and say, okay, we've made a motion, this is what we're going to do, and then we don't do anything and we don't consider anything further after that.
Madam Chair, when is our next regular meeting?
On the March 8th, which would be March 8th, which is two weeks from today. The week after that is spring break, March 22nd is the following regular meeting.
Yes. We are planning on having a work session on March 1st, is that correct? That's what we've been doing.
We can. So what's on the agenda for the work session on March 1st?
That's where I think it would be having the administrators looking to see what's the viable option of having three through six coming in at four days and seven through 12 coming in at four days.
Okay, so can you restate your amendment to capture that?
I, I think I said that, and that we would continue through that process to have the administration look to opening schools up the second week of the fourth quarter for four days. For three through 12. So we're going to, okay, so the motion is that we will start school at the hybrid as presented last week for K through six on March 8. We will tentatively set that we will start the hybrid as presented for the, for seven through 12 on March 22nd. So from now until March 22nd, we will look to see if there's a possibility that we can extend that to the four days with the hopes that we will be able to do three through 12, four days, by the second week of the last quarter.
May I ask a question?
Ms. Tolliver, yes.
What is the, Ms. Pansier, you keep referring to the second week of the fourth quarter. Can you give a date? I'm trying to figure it out.
I can't, I'm trying to figure that out too.
So in there, we have a week of spring break and I don't think we're expecting our staff to have to work that week. So I'm just wondering when we can fit in all this or they can fit in all of this extra data or information that you're asking for.
So the quarter starts the 29th. That's the last quarter.
So just for my own clarification, we have a motion and a second on the table and I understand there's been a lot of discussion and it's being asked that we look at doing things, um, possibly sooner than what it is the motion says. So, so I think as a matter of, um, protocol, those are two separate motions.
There was, there was a motion made, Madam Chair.
So there was, there's an amendment I was waiting for.
I understand there's an amendment, but the amendment can't override the original motion, can it?
Okay, all right, thank you, Ms. Oliver. Yes, you're correct, Mr. Collins, there's an amendment on the table. I was waiting to get a more succinct amendment so that we could get a second and understand what it is that we're voting on.
Yes, ma'am, so, so was I.
Okay, so in a more succinct fashion.
April 17th?
What is the 17th?
Is that correct, Ms. Ms. Hawke? We figured it out, it'd be April 17th as the second.
April, April 17th is a Saturday?
What's a Monday?
April 17th is a Saturday.
I'm sorry, you were correct, I was looking at that.
So what day are we looking at? So March 29th is the beginning of the next semester.
That is correct. So 12th of April.
For what?
Would be what she is using as the date for the possible movement to four days a week for K-12. Is that correct?
Correct.
Can you state the motion?
And if we can do them, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, restate, yes.
Okay, so let's restate it and let's try to simplify this and saying then, so amend the motion that we will start the schools at the hybrid for K through three on March 8th and we will start, and we will start the hybrid for the high school at March 22nd with the intention of having all K through 12 returned four days a week, beginning April 12th.
Second, the amendment as stated.
So I want to clarify because there are a number of errors in there. So the amendment was for three through six, not K through three, three through six to return hybrid on March 8th.
Correct.
And then seven through 12, not just the high school, seven through 12 for, to return March 22nd. All of those in hybrid, for those who have chosen hybrid with a date of what?
With the intention of us in the meantime, looking at getting all of the kids K through 12 back four days a week, starting April 12th.
Why don't we say, uh, with a request to the staff to assess April 12th as the return date of four days?
That would work.
So you want the information on the 12th or do you want?
No, no, we'll be working, no, we'll, no, that would be the start date for four days a week. So that's where we would start having work sessions, starting March 1st to see how we can prepare in order to get that implemented starting.
So. So to remind, we, we heard from the administrator, specifically Dr. Boyd, about how the instructional model, we don't have the teachers, Dr. Benson just said that a minute ago. We don't have the, we don't have the capacity to, to do that.
So that's where I, I challenge just a little bit.
Second, now it's discussion.
Okay. Well, it's taken us a while to get to an amendment. Okay, so.
And that would be something that we would discuss in the, in the work sessions.
Okay, so the end, the end of the motion for the 12th April date is, is that, that's an, a target date for having four, for having all, for having K through 12, for those that choose in person, returning four days a week on April 12th.
Correct.
Virtual still as a notch.
Absolutely.
We're exploring it.
It's right, exploring that.
So what does exploring that option mean?
We'll bring the date in terms of capacity, we'll bring the numbers to, to the board. I imagine it'll come down to, um, you know, I know it's the three through six, having spoken with the chairs today, it's going to come down to capacity in terms of staff, given we are hosting two different realities at the same time.
Yes.
Um, it will also come down to, to space it as a primary, you know, as a mitigating factor. So I mean, that'll, that'll be the picture I anticipate we would bring back to you to then make a decision as a board in terms of any, you know, your, your level of risk that you're willing to take in terms of increasing the number of students in person.
Correct, I think that gives us the time as a board.
Can we call the question?
I, I'm trying to write it down because it's a little bit convoluted. So approve Dr. Benson's recommendation that he presented earlier. And state the rest in 30 words or less.
So we would.
With a request to assess.
That we would have all K through 12 returned to a four-day instructional model by April 12th.
To assess a K through 12 return for K for, for, return four days a week.
K through 12 by April 12th.
With a request to assess K through 12 return four days a week by April 12th. So we are assessing by April 12th or having students in person on April 12th?
Well.
Target date.
I don't understand how we have a target date in an amendment, in a motion. We, it's got to be actionable, so a request to assess. So what is our assessment?
That we will open to four days to K through 12 on April 12th.
Second, the motion that, that amendment.
Okay, so, all right, all right, let's, okay, so we'll vote on the amendment, which is to approve Dr. Benson's recommendation, as stated earlier, with a request to assess the K through 12 return four days a week for an April, for a targeted.
April 12th start.
April 12th starting.
I mean, we put a motion on the table before where we would come back in person when safe. That is about as broad as we could ever get.
And so we're trying to.
Yeah, so we're trying to improve it a little bit by giving a target date so that we can give staff time to see if, what the feasibility is of, of that actually happening.
Understood, okay, so that being said, we'll vote on the amendment to the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ms. Oliver?
Nay.
Chair votes nay, motion carries. So the motion is now to approve Dr. Benson's recommendation of providing in-person instruction on the hybrid model for those who choose in grades three through six, beginning March 8th, 2021, and to provide in-person instruction on the hybrid model for those who choose in grades seven through 12, beginning March 22nd, with a request to assess K through 12 return four days a week for a target date of April, target start date of April 12th.
So, excuse me, Madam Chair, I, I'm very confused.
Hold on, Ms. T.
Okay.
Do we have a roll call on that?
We need a second. What do you mean roll?
We already voted on it.
That, no, we voted on amending the motion, so now we're voting.
Oh, sorry, okay.
The main motion.
So now the main motion, we're going to vote on the main motion.
So what just happened on the amendment? So we had a discussion about amending the motion and we voted on the amendment, but we never voted on the original motion. So a little confused about what, what did we just vote to do?
We voted to amend the motion, so now the motion is what we just voted to amend.
Okay.
We're back to the main motion. Is there any further discussion?
Can you read it again, please? I'm sorry.
Okay, so it's to approve Dr. Benson's recommendation of returning on March 8th and March 22nd for three through six and seven through 12 respectively, in the hybrid model for those who chose in-person instruction with a request to assess a K through turn, K through 12 return four days a week for a targeted start date of April 12th.
So to assess a start date of April 12th? Okay, and we're, 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 we have SOLs in April as well.
So when, when, when you call the questions, it's supposed to be brought to the board.
Will be amended.
A little confusing, Mr. Collins, about what's the amendment and what's the motion, it's kind of hard.
Well, that, so.
So I make a motion that we accept.
So I've been made and seconded.
Okay.
Okay, so, all right, so the motion, as stated, to approve Dr. Benson's recommendation, stated earlier, ad nauseam, with a request to assess K through 12 return four days a week for targeted start date of April 12th. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm not even sure what I'm voting for right now. So I'm going to say nay. I mean, if I'm approving Dr. Benson's recommendation, I vote aye.
Ms. Oliver, that's fine, you voted nay. Chair votes nay, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on to our second action item, the coronavirus response and relief supplemental award.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, this is before you, uh, for action this time, it was presented last meeting, uh, as a discussion item, but we have been notified that we are eligible for, uh, one, 1,371,409 from the CARES II, uh, award that's being dispersed by the state. Again, just for the public, this is, uh, something that we need this board to approve acceptance of. That way the county can set up a funding code, um, for the, uh, for the expenditures, so that those expenditures can be counted for, uh, at the county level. Appreciate your consideration.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Collins?
May I make a motion to accept the Corona refund CARES II for the amount of 1,371,409?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Oliver?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Can we get that on the agenda for the, um, how the money will be allocated, please?
Certainly.
That would be a discussion item, is that correct, Mr. Collins?
Yes, discussion.
We need discussions.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, so. Okay, we'll flesh that out. All right, so, all right, at this time, we're moving on to our information items. Do we have any committee reports, Ms. Panzera?
No, I do not.
Ms. Hawke?
Yes, um, I sadly was unable to attend the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School, uh, meeting, having lost power and could not get into the Zoom. But I will continue to, to try to, uh, make an effort to get that information and bring it back for the next meeting. Secondly, the bylaws, uh, committee, uh, feels that it is ready to bring the information to the board for discussion and would like to place it on the next agenda.
Next regular agenda?
Next regular.
Not at a work session.
That's up to you, Ms. Gonzalez, if you'd like to be on the discussion as a work session, that's fine.
Sounds great.
Bylaws, got it. Anything else, Ms. Hawke?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
Yes, ma'am.
Committee reports?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Oliver?
No, ma'am, thank you.
All right, um, I do not have any committee reports, so, uh, moving on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Benson.
Again, I just wanted to express my appreciation to everyone who took part Sunday's event here at the high school, in particular, uh, Ms. Fisher and, um, the group that she works with. I know there were many volunteers here, uh, from Friday through Saturday, cleaning eyes, making sure things were safe for us to host that clinic. And, uh, I sincerely appreciate all their efforts going above and beyond to help our community and our staff. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Benson. Board comment, Ms. Panzera?
So, uh, I just want to say, it, it gave me a little bit of chills tonight to have a little bit of normalcy with, um, the, um, presentations for the Healthy Poster Contest winners and the Broadwood Space Camp scholarships. I believe Mr. and Mrs. Broadwood are still here, no, Bradshaw, sorry, no, Bradwood.
Well, it's called the Brookwood.
Broadwood.
But they are.
All right, I'm terrible with names. But I think that's a, a wonderful thing that they do for our community, um, and I really appreciate that. And just having that little bit of normalcy, having the kids back in here, um, and the parents and having a little bit of celebration was, um, amazing. And thank you, Mrs. Richards, for, um, spearheading all of that. Also, I just, you know, I, I want to maybe apologize a little bit for the confusion that we had up here, but I am ecstatic that we, um, are moving in a direction to, um, not only get our kids back into school, I, uh, I just want to make it clear that, you know, I, I am concerned with everybody's wellbeing and their safety. A lot of times, you know, we've heard from the board that it's not safe to come back to school. I don't necessarily agree nor disagree with that. I think what is most important is that the families, um, are able to make that choice for themselves and know what, uh, is safer for their, their family or more fair for their family. So I'm ecstatic that we're moving towards that, uh, to allowing the families to have a choice in what works best for them. So, uh, also I'm looking forward to, um, us getting, uh, the bylaws, uh, in the work session or, uh, in a discussion among the board members so that we can possibly have a little bit more order, uh, in our, um, in our meetings. We, we've been struggling that, uh, for some time now and, and I'm looking forward to some type of resolution.
All right, thank you, Ms. Panzera. Ms. Hawke?
Thank you. I want to say a couple of really serious thank yous, um, to, I'm going to echo Dr. Benson. There were an amazing number of people who, who were on hand yesterday. Everybody from Mr. Golden to, uh, apparently there's a, a Virginia Association of Retired, uh, medical staff who were there. Uh, I heard one mention of, uh, of a OBGYN doctor, uh, there were, there were, there was National Guard here. And from Friday, they, they had been working effortlessly to get this set up. And, and we are, we need to say a thank you to, uh, our county that supported this and Dr. Benson for making it happen. And then, uh, I have to give a huge, huge thank you to Wonder Woman of the Year, Ms. Fisher. Mary Fisher, I, I know the path of your role and this has been expanded so many times beyond the scope of what any of us ever imagined that job would be. But she has, has been positive, she's been effective. I, I can't tell you how fortunate we are to have you in this role today. And, uh, yes, I, I am feeling a, a bit of the effects of, of my vaccination, but I am delighted to have had it and I'm looking forward to seeing grandchildren and, maybe planning another trip someday. And it does bring hope to see normalcy tonight, to, to see our space camp being talked about again and our, our girls clearly interested in it and involved in it and their families here. That is such a positive. I, I can't tell you how, how thrilling this is at a, at a dismal time. This is what we needed tonight. And I guess I do need to say that we, our nation did cross a, a very sad threshold today that we need to be mindful of. Our, our country hit 500,000 deaths due to COVID. Uh, our president is, uh, has lit a candle and is, uh, is declaring a memorial service. Uh, our flags will be flying at half-staff for the next five days. 500,000 people have died and it is not over. So these, even that I've had, even when I have, when I'm two weeks past, I will be wearing this and I will continue to, uh, until the science tells me otherwise. And, um, I, I, I beg of our students and our families, please do not do the social gatherings that you think you may be entitled to, not yet. We hope to give you a venue to do those when it is safe. Please, I'm asking parents, grandparents, students, little guys are doing great. Please keep the effort going, we can get these numbers down. And so we can get more girls to, to space camp and, and hopefully more boys and, and see more Mars perse, perseverance, landings and. landings, and, um, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hop. Mr. Collins?
Thank you. I'd like to thank you folks for funding the, the space camp. Brings great joy to my heart when citizens step up for our youth and look for the future of what our future brings in this county. I'd like to say thank you. The young, young folks that won the poster contest, that was, I was glad to see them there in person. I hope that we can come to a clear and concise starting of schools in King George County. I think we're moving in a direction that has been in the past. And I appreciate the, the other boards member willingness to listen to each other without with other board members listening to each other. I'd like to thank the new Wonder Woman. So, Ms. Fisher, you will now, from this day forward, be considered Wonder Woman, and we will address you as that. Thank you for the great job you did. I observed it. Not only did I observe it, but, uh, in my family, I saw the emails come across that when it was canceled and it was re-upped and helping everybody get into the sites, and so I think we reached another milestone with our employees, all employees that wanted the vaccine, that were able to get it. And that will conclude my comments this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Collins. Ms. Oliver?
Yeah, I'd also like to thank Ms. Fisher and her team and the county and all that worked very hard to get the vaccinations handled and processed. I heard there was, the parking lot was packed Sunday at King George High School, so thank you, Mary Fisher, for doing an outstanding job, and I know you've been working over, over, overtime lately. I appreciate the Be Healthy Poster Contest winners and Broadwood Space Camp Scholarship. Part of me wants to say that though, yes, there was some normalcy in those artists coming forward this evening, there's also some normalcy in the fact that they did the artwork and submitted it in the first place. So kids are still doing what kids need to do, even virtually, and I think that's kudos to our teachers and our staff. I listen a lot to comments about getting kids back in school safely, but I also want to make sure that we get all of our staff in school safely, and Ms. Hop made a comment about we hit the $500,000 death mark today in this country, and I think that's something to heed at times when we talk about moving forward more quickly than we maybe should sometimes. I don't know. We all want to see kids back in school, there's no doubt about that, but we want to make sure it happens in the most safe way possible. Um, I am not sure about the final discussion and the vote on the action item to return in person this evening. What just happened, it was a little confusing and convoluted, I think, to the public as well as to me, so my understanding is that we will return as recommended by Dr. Benson and continue to move forward for even greater return of more students. I hope that's what was the understanding by all. I also want to recognize that this is National School Board, Virginia School Board, where, appreciation of, I'm sorry. And I do appreciate all of you. It's been a difficult year. Everybody's very passionate about what they believe and where they'd like to see things go, but I do appreciate everybody's hard work and patience. I also want to comment that I was not present at the work session last week because I was traveling to the out-of-state location where I am now, taking care of a family medical emergency, so I appreciate your patience with me as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Um, so as for myself, I would, at the risk of sounding like a broken record, like to echo a lot of what has been said by my colleagues this evening. Yes, thank you to Ms. Fisher and all the other extraordinary individuals who have helped pull off the vaccination clinics. I know that's a monumental task, and I think it's amazing that in less than a year, since our school's closed, here we are talking about teachers getting vaccinated and everyone else, others in our community. I just think that's amazing. Not to take away from over half a million deaths, which is heartbreaking. Um, thank you, Ms. Richard, for your continued advocacy for our students, for bringing our poster contest winters, winners to the meeting. It's a great opportunity to see children and as well as some great artwork, so thank you for that as well. To those involved with the Broadwood Space Camp Scholarship, I know, um, got a little distracted there with the loss of audio, but I did want to say that as a, as an engineer myself, it's very encouraging to see all of our young women especially for thinking about that and pursuing those things already. I know things have changed a lot since the 30 years since I've been that age, so it's very encouraging. So thank you all for all that you've done to encourage that. Um, I'd like to state for the record why I did not vote in favor of the in-person learning motion this evening. I voted nay, not because I didn't support Dr. Benson's March 8th and March 22nd return dates, but because I do not agree with the amendment, which will increase the demands on our administrators and staff, right when they are bringing our students back in the buildings. Had the motion not been amended, I would have most certainly voted in favor. And lastly, I plan to register for the V S B A Hot Topics Conference, which is being held virtually on March 17th. Um, the topics on the agenda are particularly fitting for this year, which is why I wanted to comment on it. The topics are the hidden biases of good people, school board and superintendents communicating as a team, and school segregation by boundary line in Virginia, scope, significance, and state policy solutions. Highly encourage my colleagues to register and attend this as well. And that is all I have. So at this time, do we have any motion to move into closed meeting?
Could I make a clarification first? So the stipends are added into that motion, and there was a email today with the stipends. Is that included in the budget, or is this a separate, some of those are separate items under?
It's simply the approval of stipends for certain persons. Can I close? Yeah. As normal.
No add to the budget? Stipends for the closed meeting?
No, certainly not.
Asking clarification, thank you. I moved pursuant to State Code 2.2 dash 3711 point A point one, with the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment and assignments of stipends, resignation, substitutes, and retirements of employees of the school board.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Ms. Oliver?
I'm sorry, aye.
Chair votes aye. We are now in closed session? All ready? Is Ms. Oliver back with us? Good, okay.
I am.
To return to open session?
That the King George County School Board return to open session and certify pursuant to State Code 2.2 dash 3712 point D. Only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was conveyed, or heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting of the public body.
Second. Confirm.
I certify. Stop, Ms. Oliver?
I certify as well.
You may certify. So do we have a motion to return to open session?
I second that.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. All right, yep, sorry. Uh, yeah, so do we have, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, chair votes aye. We are now in return to open session. Motion to accept the action resulting from closed meeting?
Make a, a motion to accept personnel as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Collins?
I said aye.
I'm sorry to hear you. All right, chair votes aye. Motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Any discussion?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we are now adjourned.